... board can lead your meeting and we will get started. 9:40. Good morning.
Thank you all for coming.
It's a pleasure.
We have obviously been working on this since about May, really. Talking with Rocky and figuring out what makes the best sense. And it felt like it was time for a joint meeting. I know you all had some of the information ahead of time. We tried to lay out, or they laid out everything to us, where our options are. We've had several questions. Board's done a good job, in my opinion, of evaluating what makes sense. This is not a recommendation as far as we're concerned. This is an open discussion. There are several variables in what goes on and how we handle our future water. I think the board's all in agreement that water needs are tough in West Texas and we know that. We kind of got lulled into it after the rain, but we've seen the recent heat and what it's caused to us. So, I think there's some good options here. I think we just have to figure out what the mix of those options are on a long-term basis. I think the board is interested in that we... Two things really happened. That we figure out and have a long-term plan, and that we don't continually go back to the people, and that whatever we do and decide, that we fully disclose to the citizens of San Angelo that's the best for them, in bullet points, things that are the pure facts and where we need to go and what we have in San Angelo, and what concerns the Ivy, what concerns the Hickory, and then obviously the reclamation of non-mildual water use. So, that's where we are. Who's going to do that? One more slide, Joe.
Hello, Mayor.
You on, sir?
I am, thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Mayor, Council, Mayorman, Board, appreciate very much y'all taking your time to be here. This has been an interesting process we've gone through, taking a look at the financial position of utility, and I would appreciate Rick Giardina and Rocky Crayley with Repelis Financial Consultants working with us on this, and they will present the findings today. Just as kind of a peek back on what Chairman Boyd said, is that we've taken the preliminary results to the board twice now, which we turned back in early July, and they had a great amount of discussion and sent us back to look at some differing issues and a way to look at the whole process. And so, we brought it back yesterday and had some good discussion again, and really wanted to spend the time today for y'all to have some of that discussion, and hopefully we can come out of that today with some consensus, or at least some good discussion on how we should move forward to finalize this process and where we should go. So, again, appreciate you being here, and I'm just going to go ahead and turn it over to Rick and let him start the process. Please don't hesitate to interrupt at any time if you have any questions or need clarification, or if we just want to have some general discussion on the topics that's being discussed at that time.
Thank you, Bill. Good morning, Mayor, Council, Mr. Chairman, Board. Thanks again for taking the time to spend with us. I know you all have very busy agendas. We want to move rather briskly, and I say that because a lot of this information, the board has certainly seen it on a couple occasions, and Council, if you've had an opportunity to see some of this information. So, I will move rather quickly, but as Bill said, this bunch has never been shy, so do not hesitate to interrupt if you have a question, if you need to get me back on focus, please don't hesitate to jump in. Our purpose today, as Bill said, is to have that open discussion. Again, the board's been briefed in a little greater detail, and some of this information will be new to Council, but we would love to, at the end of this meeting, have some direction from this collective group as to where we want to go with regard to the financial plan and rate design for our customers here in San Angelo. So, a fairly long agenda, but I think we can do it in the next 60 minutes. We want to talk about the purpose of this study. We want to walk through some financial plan, drivers, metrics, things that are important in terms of securing a sustainable financial future for the community, and what that will do to help support a supply future for the community. So, we're made studying. Why do we bother doing one of these? You go through a budgeting process every year, and as a result of that budgeting process, what's shown on the left hand of this slide usually is an outcome. What we're doing now, on the right side, is a more formalized process, more consistent with industry practices, to really answer the three questions shown here. How much money do we need to generate each year to have a sustainable operation? Who should be paying that? And the who is the different types of customers that we serve, whether it's commercial, residential, industrial, and then how they should pay. The rate structure, that monthly bill that goes out. We could have all of our customers pay $75 a month regardless of the amount of water they use, and that would secure our financial future because we know how much water, how much money we're going to get each and every month. Or we can have customers pay $3 per 1,000 gallons, and if they don't use any, they don't pay anything, even though we've made an investment to serve them. So, you have those kinds of choices. That's that third question, how do customers pay? So, we're going to share with you today some information, some findings with regard to your current rate structure, and some suggestions for improvement on your question of how do customers pay? Let's take a moment to talk about challenges based by the utility, and these start with some very fundamental things such as, we have to cover our costs, we have to meet our revenue requirements, we need to generate enough revenue each and every day to pay our bills, just like any of you at your household or the business that you own and operate. But we also need to be thinking a little longer term towards financial targets. As we undertake a water supply project, we're talking about tens of millions of dollars, and we have to go and borrow that money. And the lenders want to be sure that we have a sustainable financial future and that we can meet certain metrics, and so we're going to spend some time talking about those metrics. And then, all the way to the top here, about capital reinvestment. Once we undertake this water supply project, we're not done and good. Our infrastructure will age. Every five, 10 years, you have to replace your car. Every 10 or 20 years, you have to place the roof on your house. We have to replace this infrastructure periodically. That's the nature of this business. And so, we say this, there will always be revenue increases. There will always be revenue increases. This study does not... I'm never hired to do... Hey, I shouldn't say that wrong. Yeah, I'm never hired to do a rate decrease. We don't do that in this business. It's just not the nature. This is the most capital-intensive utility that is operated in the country, more capital-intensive than electric, than natural gas, than telecommunications. Some of the challenges. We're in a business where we encourage our customers to use less of our product, and we have to be financially sound. Buy less of my product, then how do I cover my costs? For the reason I said, we're so capital-intensive, consumption goes down 10%, our costs do not go down 10%. 80, 90% of our costs are fixed, debt service, capital. The only costs that we incur that are truly variable are chemicals and power, and they are very small percent. So, we encourage our customers to use less water, our actuals come in below our budgets, and we have jalousies. So, what we've done here in San Angelo over the years is, we had the good fortune of building reserves in the past. We've been drawing down on those reserves as customers had used less water. Now, what's happened here is not that different than what we see in communities and utilities across the country. We've been building for a couple of decades a conservation ethic, and we've asked customers to cut back. That has really taken hold, and then when you layer on top of that drought restrictions, level one, level two, level three, that drives that use down even further. And when we lift those drought restrictions, a decade or two ago, when we lifted those drought restrictions, we would see the bounce-back effect. Customers would go right back to using as much water as they did in the past. Today, that doesn't happen because we've built the ethic of conservation. They don't bounce back. So, we're seeing a reduction in our cabinet use. The benefit of that will be longer term. The assets we have today, the water supply we have today, or we acquire in the near term will last longer, but today, it creates a financial problem. So, the financial plan that we've constructed looks at a lot of alternatives, but it starts with the definition of what's our revenue today, shown here in the orange bar. This is what it will look like, will make no changes over the next five years. The line represents our revenue requirement, and revenue requirement is defined as our cost of providing service. That is going up through capital reinvestment, through normal inflation increases in those variable costs like chemicals and power, those kinds of things. So, we have this gap. That's the blue bar. That's the gap we're trying to close. Part of that gap is also meeting financial metrics that I'll talk about, metrics that put us in a good position to go and borrow money for a water supply project. So, the metrics here, starting right at the top with our annual operating position. Our revenues should meet or exceed our costs. We are a business, in governmental accounting nomenclature, we're an enterprise fund, which means we should operate and stand on our own two feet. We shouldn't receive subsidies from the general fund, we shouldn't subsidize the general fund, those kinds of things. We need to stand on our own merit. So, our revenues need to at least meet our costs, but they also should produce what we call days' cash on hand, working capital, the money that we all need between that period for utility, though we provide service and when we bill customers and collect the revenue, and other measures of liquidity. Lastly, debt service coverage. This is a measure that we can pay back those loan us money, and do that within the enterprise fund without support and subsidy from the general fund or other sources. So, we've designed a financial plan that does this, a financial plan where revenues equal costs, where we're building, we're not there today, but we build over time and get to a goal of at least 75 days. And some of the higher, the highest rated utilities, water utilities in the business, they might have liquidity or days on hand of as much as one to two years. And this is something the rating agencies look at when they're providing us a rating, and the importance of the rating is, the higher the rating in general terms, the lower the borrowing cost, and that produces savings for our customers over the term of that debt, which is going to be at least 20 years. So, these are things that help drive the financial plan in addition to what's our projection of O&amp;M costs, what's our projection of capital needs, capital that we would cash fund or pay as you go, and capital that we would issue debt for. Capital is the driver here. I've said it a couple times, you'll continue to hear me say it. It is what drives the needs of the utility. O&amp;M costs are important, but capital is the driver. And so, on the water side, on the water reclamation side, this is what's driving it, but we have a big one out there in terms of the need for additional water supply, and that's going to be the big driver going forward. So, the scenarios we've developed. We've developed three scenarios. The first, in order to, in order to set the stage with what we call a do-nothing, I will tell you right now, this is not a recommendation, but it puts things in context of what happens if we just stay the course, that if we do not raise rates, what happens? Maintain is, we are trying to have some adjustments. We begin to meet some targets, but it's just ongoing cash-funded capital. This doesn't do anything in terms of advancing capital reinvestment, more importantly, it doesn't do anything about a future water supply project. So, let me start with the do-nothing. The maintain, through our discussions with the board, and the board, please chime in here, throughout this presentation, don't let me mischaracterize anything you told us, maintain doesn't do anything to advance us on a water supply solution. So, we've essentially eliminated that. Let me start with do-nothing. The rates we have in place today, we do not change. So, our revenue sufficiency, are we generating enough revenue to cover our costs? The blue bar is the cost. The revenue is what we would get over the next five years if we do not change revenue, do not change or increase our rates, or find other revenue sources. Water utility on the left, water rec on the right. So, you can see, we fail this test. Next, our days' O&amp;Ms. My target is 75 days. Today, we sit at about 20 days. If we do nothing, the bank account is wiped clean on both water and water rec. Then, lastly, our debt service coverage, our ability to repay debt. Our target is 1.25. Again, providing a cushion, an assurance that we can repay what we borrowed, and you can see we fail on this one. So, do-nothing is not an alternative. Cost dramatically, or find new revenue sources. The new revenue sources can be one of two things. It can be finding a nice donor to the utility, or raising rates. So, moving forward, this is the essence of the moving forward scenario. We have to adjust our user charges. We'll fund some of our critical capital, and I... Future water supply is huge, it's critical, but so is this, or these other items. Infrastructure that's going to continue to deteriorate, fail. And then, the financial sustainability targets. So, that we're an attractive borrower when it comes to going to the state, the state SRF money, revolving fund money, other state sources, or even the traditional capital where we go out and either as a community, issue general obligation bonds that are first backed by our taxing ability, but would be primarily supported by user rates, or switching to a general revenue bond. So, those are the targets, and that's what we're getting on a moving forward basis. The punchline, today, the average customer in San Angelo pays about $52, $51 a month for water and water reclamation service. This doesn't include solid waste, anything else that's on the bill. This is just water and water reclamation. Under the moving forward plan, over five years, that bill would increase to $82 for the average customer. The average customer uses about 4,000 gallons of water per month. So, that increase in the first year, about $10, we would all have different views as to the impact that that has on customers, and what they may or may not have to give up to come up with $10 a month. And so, I won't try to tell you that it's a huge impact, I won't try to tell you that it's not an impact. It affects each and every one of us in a different fashion. There are any number of resources out there in the community for those that have difficulty in paying their bills. There are opportunities for them, there are support out there, but this is the plan under the moving forward, assuming we increase our user charges, it would result in a bill from $51 to $82. What does that give us? It puts us on a path to a future water supply project, a project that would be funded, you know, a total project with about $140 million price tag that would share funding responsibility from both water and water reclamation. It would begin over, over this two-year period, which is right around the corner, and we'd be issuing debt, 20-year term, seeking to borrow as much as we could from the state at the lowest, at the lowest cost possible before going to the traditional bond market, but we'd also use the ballot initiative that was passed for projects just like this, and we'd be using almost $2.5 million per year. And what we would be doing is, in '16 and '17, we would be banking that money, taking that $2.5 million, putting it aside, and then start to use it in the following year to repay the debt that's been issued, and to repay a portion of the debt that's been issued. The $2.5 million would not cover the entire amount. Yes?
Who would pay this? One more back. Would you kind of break this down a little bit, like 5, 20, 7.5% about?
We're going to talk a little bit about that, yes. And if I don't get to your question...
That's important, everybody understands that.
The 20%, the $10 increase starts us on the path to meeting our financial metrics, to achieving all these goals that we've talked about. We didn't get in this position of using our existing reserves and drawing them down to this really low level. We didn't get there overnight, so we shouldn't try to fix this overnight. But this is, in our opinion, a good start, a one that's necessary, if for no other reason, than to position us to go out and borrow money for the water supply project, to show the lenders that we're on the right path, and I can't emphasize how critically important that is. This is how that path begins, starting with our revenue sufficiency. Do we generate enough revenue to cover our costs under this plan? Well, what this shows us, that we're on that path, again, the blue bar is our cost, the orange line is existing revenues with, with the half-sec sales tax, and then the yellow line is the user rates and where we get when we combine the sales tax with the user rate increase, the water and the water rec. So, it starts us on this path to be sure that our annual revenues exceed, meet or exceed our annual costs. The days' O&amp;M are working capital allowance. Our goal is 75 days. You can see here on the waterfront on the left where we would be under this plan. Today, we're about 20 days. Even that dwindles in the first year, but with the increases we're talking about, going from $51 to $81 or $82 over the next five years on the combined bill, gets us to that goal of 75 days in 2020. So, again, we don't try to push us in a really aggressive manner to get there overnight. Let's get there, but let's get there in a measured manner, and one that we collectively think is acceptable to the community. Water reclamation, we're at or above our goal already, but we have another measure to look at, and that's debt service coverage. So, while we're generating a lot of cash on water reclamation, this plan, our coverage, gets us right at the targets over this five-year period, and we get there as well on water. This is a critical one when we go to borrow money. The prior one, dealing with our cash on hand liquidity, is very important, and it's one of the rating agency criteria that with their recent changes in their criteria, it's gotten more emphasis, but in my opinion, debt service coverage is probably still the most important measure, and being sure that we can show coverage greater than one. Coverage of one just means we have just enough to repay our debt. Coverage of 1.25 provides a little assurance, which is particularly important on the water side because of that fluctuation in revenue from year to year, whether it's because we've depressed water use because we're in a drought, level one, level two, level three, or we have an unusually wet spring. And I think here, we have rain back in June.
It was raining.
All through the spring, and that depressed water use. So, we have these different factors. It's an interesting business that we're in, and how our revenues are so influenced, whether it's because we tell customers not to use less, or the weather tells customers not to get water. So, here's the, here's the customer bill, and how, both water and wastewater, water and water rec, and how it would move going forward, and on a combined basis, today, $51, five years down the road, moving to about $82 for the average customer. If I use more water than 4,000 gallons a month, my bill's going to be higher. So, this is the financial plan, and maybe just take a quick break and get reaction to what I've shown you here. This tells us how much revenue, how much money we need each year to be a potentially sustainable entity. We're going to now talk about who should pay and how they should pay. That's, that's the next segment. So, comments or questions at this point about the financial plan? Yes?
On your moving forward slide, you talked about the fiscal year 2015, 2016, where it went up like $10, and then you made a comment, there's support out there for those folks that can't afford it. I deal with a lot of folks that are low income, and really the elderly that are in my district. So, what, what support is out there? What do I tell them?
I'm going to have to defer to staff a little bit here in terms of county resources and other resources that might be available.
I have, I've never heard of any, so if anybody wants to educate me on those, I'd be...
So, I don't have that list with me, but we have actually produced that. There are multiple agencies in San Angelo that will assist individuals who can't pay their bill. We also have a provision in our ordinance that allows us to work with elderly to help them get their bill paid, or, you know, and whether it's pay it out or whatever the issue might be. So, there is quite a few opportunities for assistance in San Angelo.
Maybe get with Anthony Wilson and put that out on SATV. And again, I'm talking about the folk that really need help. I'm not talking about the people out there for free, right? I'm talking about the elderly that really struggle from month to month with their water. So, if we can get that information out too, then via any means, okay? Very good.
It could be a broader set of our customer base than, than just the elderly. We have others from the age spectrum on the other end that are challenged, can be challenged for a number of reasons. And so, you know, by definition, elderly aren't always the ones that are in need. Fixed income aren't always the ones that are in need. Sometimes, these are customers, these are very customers that can use a tremendous amount of water in their fishing rig, so, but you might as well take it. Yes?
A question for you, Mark, the commonality. I think I remember from the city that I moved to, a combined bill, water, wastewater, electric, but I think I remember at the bottom of the, of the statement that it said, if you want to donate to those that are in need, check this box, dollar, $2, or whatever it was. I don't think, but I seem to recall that.
Yeah, I think it's on the app.
Do we have that kind of capability here that we could implement?
I would defer again to our billing system, and one of the challenges you have then is, well, should we, as the city, be the agency that administers the use of those funds? And when I say administers the use of those funds, you then are in the position of, how do I determine who's qualified? And that's where you often have other social services agencies, whether it's the county or others, that are in a better position to determine who's qualified. I'm not dismissing your idea because that money could go to those funds. You can, the city could just be the collection vehicle for that, and then those dollars could go to the funds who are, who are set up to administer. I don't, generally...
So, it's viable?
It's viable. It's viable. The way you characterize it is right on point, that it's a volunteer. My bill's $89. I can decide to donate five more dollars. Where you run into problems is if you want to have customers take part of their $89 and subsidize. But if I want to donate more, that's done, as you said, it's done on the electric, on the gas bill, and I've seen it done with many other utilities.
I have a question about the reserve.
Yes. No, go ahead.
Michael, where did Michael go?
Oh, you.
You talk about there was a reserve that we've spent down, and 10 years ago, when I first arrived in San Angelo, there was a pilot that we essentially eliminated, where a water fund was supporting the general fund. So, can you kind of explain historically how we arrived at this place? I mean, was it simply a lack of any capital expenditure, no maintenance? It was...
You want me to talk about pilot?
There were a lot of moving pieces, a lot of moving parts that helped, I think, contribute to the position that we're in right now.
I think one of the things...
It was a lack of revenue, because, what was it, two years ago, three years ago, we all sat there across and decided, should we, I mean, when it hit 75 days, we decided whether we were going to give it back. There's an ordinance in there, and we had that every six months, three months, whatever it was. And so, it came up, and it was brought up numerous times. So, the fund, the fund balance was either at 75 or close to 75 two, three years ago, as you saw from the slide. So, and so, what has happened, in the short answer, people have done what we've asked them to do, use less water.
If you go back to the idea of the pilot, that's even pre-conservation. If you go back to the idea of the pilot, that's even pre-conservation, when we were borrowing from the water fund to support the general fund.
The payment in lieu of taxes, there were two funds. And council wanted them eliminated, but we didn't make it clear to eliminate the...
We eliminated water six years ago, and then wastewater, we, I think we just finally made our elimination.
Just finally eliminated the payment in lieu of taxes.
We're phasing it, but we did the wastewater in phases.
But my question is, if we had a higher reserve and before the conservation ethic sort of came forward, and there was money that we borrowed or used from the water fund to support the general fund, is this just, I mean, simply the function of the drought? Or what was happening 20 years ago where we were making so much money off the water fund that it could support or was supporting the general fund? How are we so wealthy in water?
In water revenue.
In water revenue, yeah, revenue.
We were sold a lot more.
Sold a lot more.
When you look, when you go back and you look at the historical numbers, our use, and Bill can look at all the numbers, but our use has gone down dramatically year for year. What's our average?
Some months we used to be... And now we're down to 14.
And this is high, and we're sitting 17 right now, yesterday or day before. And that's...
That's what makes me so sad about what we're talking about. You encourage people to conserve and revenue goes down.
And so what we're illustrating here in terms of budget versus actual has been happening for a number of years and drawing those reserves we had at the 75-day level, drawing those down. Yes, sir.
Facts to remember, I mean, the one and a quarter debt service is a minimum requirement from having the best rating that we can have from a financial standpoint. 75 days cash on hand to get there is okay. It's not, it's not the best. 90 is where you want to work from a financial perspective. When we, this plan's presented to you, there's no growth. It's taken off of 15 numbers. We've had a lot of rain in 15. So there's no projected growth, there's no projected water use in what we're talking about today. It has no consideration for all the new hotels in town, any commercial growth, any residential growth that we're still experiencing. We threw the deal about the half-cent sales tax use in there. That's basically right at $2.5 million. We've asked for a better detail of that. That's 50% of the non-committed projected revenue. It does not consider any projects that come off in the future that we could put more additional money towards this and lower that cost to our citizens, okay? To us, I think, y'all correct me. Everybody spends money on sales tax, everybody needs water. To me, those go together. You know, from a long-term plan, whether we go rock water reclamation, it makes a lot of sense to figure out how much of our half-cent sales tax that we can still do economic development, the things that we need to do and entice businesses to come here and grow, but also to help offset some of that future cost.
Yeah, and a lot of really good points there. This financial plan is a conservative financial plan. We ideally want our actual revenues to come in higher. There's some growth in the community, some of the hotels, and actual revenues coming higher than what we're saying. We hope the expenditures come in less than what we're saying here. So it's absolutely by design, by intent, a conservative plan. We hope the results are actually better. We're not asking that you adopt a five-year plan today, or, we're not asking you to adopt anything today, we want your direction, but down the road, we're not looking for adoption of a five-year plan. We would like you to strongly consider maybe a three-year plan. That would really bode well with the rating agencies and the lenders that the communities committed to this plan. But what that means is that any future council can come in and modify that plan. Circumstances change. We have significant economic development. Water supply project costs come in substantially less than we think, whatever it might be, the plan can be changed. But adopting a multi-year plan, say a three-year plan, again, sends a strong signal to the lending agencies, to the rating agencies, that the community's behind this. So we have a question here, and then I'll come over.
By having a five-year plan and giving people what this year's bill will be, what next year's bill will be, following year, assist them in doing their budgeting and meeting their family's obligations toward the usage that they're using by providing them this five-year plan, they know what it's going to be.
And by updating this plan every year for changes. And that's one of the things that's part of this project. I'm glad you brought that up.
We grow as we age, is what this is. This plan is growing as it ages to cover our needs.
Very true, very true. We're, part of our deliverables is a model, a tool that staff can use to update each year as part of the budget process, so that each year you can see what the new five-year plan looks like based on changes.
One more comment on that. That seven and a half percent that's shown in those years two through five, that was 10%. When we brought the sales tax money at the conservative $2.5 million, that's how much it drops. The other thing we talked about yesterday, we do a refact every year. If water consumption goes up, revenues go up, days cash on hand or building like it's supposed to, then maybe we could lower that seven and a half to six. But every year during a five-year plan, which I think is important, you could lower it. You hope you could.
Let me hear a question there. Yes?
One of the other aspects and thoughts that we're, I see that there is possibility for some money to come into this fund, is I know that, what I'm concerned about is that we keep hitting the consumers, okay? We keep hitting the consumers with higher rates with our track. I'm not going to go into that topic, but you know, we should, but fees and rates, I mean, just keep going. The price of oil started out this morning at $42.01. I mean, San Angelo economy is good, but it's not vibrant the way it really could and should, and we hope that will be. The other thing that's out on the table today is you guys, y'all are facing today right now, is you do have a surplus, okay? I would like to be the first to recommend and hope that maybe there's an opportunity that y'all could take some of that surplus and fund maybe the water surplus fund. That that could be an avenue where, again, could maybe lower some of these projections down, lower some of these costs down and impact to all the individuals and customers as they go. I'm not doubting, we're going to have to have a rate increase. That's, I think the fact that it's going to happen, it's not a question of if it's going to happen, it's maybe a question of how much is it going to happen? When we bring in the half-cent sales tax, we bring in, you know, possibly if you guys could bring in a little bit of revenue from, from extra revenue out there, I mean, maybe we can lower the impact to some of these customers that are out there and lessen the burden of, instead of $10 a month, maybe it's $8 a month. I don't know. I would just love to see that as an option on the table.
Mayor, you were next.
I'm looking at this at one slide, it's talking about $136 million cost. Is that our wastewater rego? But that was 137.
And understand that, we're not in the position to say that that is the project. We're saying we want to allocate, we want to have out there 135, 140 million for whatever project.
So what we are saying is theoretically, if we went with $137 million on the water reclamation, our wastewater reclamation, then this $10 a month, and then the $5 and $6 a month through '20 would take care of that 137.
The debt service.
That's what the holdage is.
It's also at 5% interest, Mayor. We use a combination debt. You go to the state first, 2% type money, then you do a bond issue for the remainder, and that should be, in my opinion, around the, quote me, three and a half, where it is today. You got to figure out when you get your, when you start your debt.
So if we adopt this, that takes care of our wastewater. I don't want to have, I don't want to adopt a $10 a month charge and then come back next year and say, hey, then if we need $137 million, we're going to hit you another 10. I think if I'm remembering correctly, when we went to Hickory, it was $14 a month. Am I right, Ken?
I was thinking like $8.
But we're in the ballpark. So I don't want to hit them for 10 and then have to go back and hit them for another 10 when we prove this. But that is...
That should be...
It's all I've learned.
So say it again, this includes water reclamation?
Yes, yes.
Let's clarify. This includes a project of approximate size of about $135 million.
So there's some product that you selected in order to plug into this?
And water reclamation generates about 50% of our daily water use today. That's 7.2 million gallons, what we determined yesterday.
That's the answer I wanted to be here. And this goes back to the point that somebody made earlier about, let's go take one bite at the apple and not have to come back each year. That answers your question, Mayor.
So does this also include the Reteroyo project potentially?
No, it does not.
Okay, so moving forward, how do we sort of have a placeholder in these numbers for the potential benefit of that project?
I don't think we've come, really come to the point of saying, of rating all those projects and seeing everything out there yet.
And I guess it has a potential to benefit the consumer on these numbers.
Absolutely. And that's why, again, I want to be clear, we're not saying it's the water rec project. It could be this, and this, and this, and then...
A portfolio.
It's a placeholder for a water supply.
That's budget, get all that done.
Okay, my last question for the moment is on your numbers, when you talk about capital, capital intensity, and this is basically addressing the need for capital. We believe that we have some significant water loss in the existing system for treated water. I'm asking you if that's an O and M issue, or do you see that as a capital issue and how have you addressed it?
I would, I would, don't take this wrong, challenge the tenant first, that it's significant. Based on the numbers that I've talked to Bill about, it's in line with what we see industrywide. There are, there's water losses and there's unaccounted for water. So when the fire department's out flushing mains and testing hydrants, that's unaccounted for water. And that's part of our total portfolio of water losses. The difference between what we produce at the plant and what we sell to the customers. The actual water losses, where we have water that leaks through the pipes, is in the single digit.
Eight, I remember saying eight yesterday.
And that's generally within industry standards. Is there opportunity for some improvement of both categories? Yes, but I wouldn't call that significant. And yes, some of the capital things that we will be doing will help with that, but their primary purpose is to deal with the aging infrastructure, pressure problems, those kinds of things.
Okay, so I'll ask you again, regardless of the percentage, because I think it's changed in a year, the number we're quoting, and I'm fine with that. If it's less, that's, that's good. But is that a capital issue, or is that addressed in operation and maintenance?
Well, if Bill answered that.
Currently, we budget capital money for infrastructure rehab. I think you have two things here. One is if you fix stuff, that's O and M. If you replace stuff, that's capital. And I think we're looking at this as it's a capital expenditure for rehabilitation.
And you spend how much a year on your lines?
We budget about $3 million.
About $3 million. And what's the, what's the mortgage on that? How long, 30-year, 45-year? To go through the cycle?
It's a long time.
It's a long time. And I think that's the point of, that, because we poked him on that question, is that, well, what if we spent all this money to try to fix that? And then the percentage of what you, the first perception was, it's a lot of money for a little bit of water. And I don't mean that, I'm not trying to say that 8% is not a good number amount of water, but it's very expensive.
But if we used a number like 20 or 15 before, that's where you're kind of motivated to do something. But if we don't believe it's there, I agree.
Yeah, let me clarify that. Our total loss is about 16%. You have those 16%, some of that is accounted for, some of it is unaccounted for. But even some of that that is accounted for, we know where it's going, but it's because of aging infrastructure. So that that we don't know where it's going is about 8%. There's probably 12% or so that's lost through leaks. We can fix that, I mean, we can, we can improve that.
See what you just found? It's excellent.
Yes, yes.
When you, when you were speaking earlier, you were saying the three-year plan, but I think the board is more in favor of the five-year plan, correct?
Kind of a rolling plan.
Yeah, I mean, it can be changing at any time, so why wouldn't we just go with the five-year plan? I don't, I don't even see how we would even bring up the three-year plan. If it can slide, we can change it as we go along that. And then getting to the reclaimed water situation. The reclaimed water plant is so important because that is guaranteed water. That is guaranteed, and we have no other guarantees of any other water other than that. So that's, that's one of those things with us as a council, and I think that's why y'all push the number, I know you're not pushing the project, but the number so hard, is that we have to do that. We have to do that, and even more so than the Royal or any other, because it is guaranteed, it is there.
It's just coincidental that the numbers...
And I like, I like it.
As long as we're flushing.
It's coincidental. I brought this up at the meeting when we met about this last lease, though, is that the cost has gone up so astronomically in the last couple of years. I couldn't understand that, because when I looked at the last, the last couple of plants, it seems like it's almost tripled. Is that, is that right?
I have not seen any numbers prior to what the consultant produced as far as a part of the study.
So where are we getting this number at?
That's, that came in as part of the study, as part of the money. Is it a conservative number? Yes, but it's, it's an expensive number.
And they had compared against several projects that were out there, this was in line with what's out there.
I think the five-year is a very prudent way to go, especially from the idea of the consumer budgeting for this. I think we have to be flexible, because hopefully, you being conservative, we're going to find some benefits that right now are not identified.
That's our hope.
But, you know, philosophically, my concern is that we, we have an infrastructure, whether we're talking about streets, water, or all the others, we've built, but we have not maintained it.
I totally agree.
We were very optimistic, but we've got to, we, we can't, we can't keep pushing this out in some discipline time. We have to address this.
Can you recall, our Hickory was on Plan A, and I insisted them, we have to have a Plan B. That Plan A isn't sufficient to meet our needs per day, and we have to have a Plan B. And I see the reclamation as a solid Plan B.
Some of the numbers around to that point yesterday, it's been discussed previously as well, but looking at Hickory, the reuse, and potentially Reteroyo, bring us up to almost 90% of daily required years.
And understand that the Hickory percentage is kind of a minimalistic use. It's not capping.
It's hollowed out. So that's, that's started to get to a pretty good secure situation.
Everything that we've talked, just so you know, when we've been analyzing numbers on Hickory, it's a true minimalistic, that we want to, that's our only get out of jail free card that we have, only one. And so we need to hold on to that baby as long as we can.
Let me take a couple more comments, then I want to, want to move on, just in the interest of time, to how to get our customers to pay for this.
I heard the word maintenance, and I heard the word leaky. So Bill, my question is, where are we on replacing those water lines? I know that there were so many miles, but where are we, what percentage? We always hear that we're not there yet, but we can add in.
I don't know if I can answer that, so as a percentage, I tell you, there's still a lot of the system that needs some rehabilitation. I think it's been estimated in the, in the $100 million category for just lines that exceeded their life expectancy in the...
So we were making the line on a daily basis or monthly?
Well, we're, we do some in-house. We also have a project going on right now, two, so less than $2 million, and it's two, three miles of line to replace. That's how we've been approaching it. We budget that, I'd say, minimal amount every year, and says what we can budget with our, our end spend, with our current revenue, and trying to make an impact on it. So we try to target the most, the areas that give us the best thing.
We have a $100 billion of need since we're starting to handle it in a year.
Yeah, I think it's probably...
One more question now.
The last thing I want to tell you, it was mentioned earlier about possibly subsidizing this with some general fund money or something like that. I'm not in favor of that at all, because all the money that we have spent, we worked on this so hard, about our road, I mean, this is not the only problem we have right now. Our roads and our, and other infrastructure projects are almost as important, not quite as important, but... as important, but I, I like, you know, I'm more of the mindset of, you know, we have to pay, we keep keeping this down the road, and we keep helping them out. And I know, I know you had said that just help out a little bit, not, we're going to get a raise. We all know that the, the rate hike is coming, but I think you just go ahead and put it out there. And I realize that I'll, I'll take a lot of heat for that, but this is more a situation where every year, stuff that I buy goes up next year, it goes up. And we have not been doing that little, the little increases, I think we would have been better off if we were doing little increases every year for the last, the last big one was the $14 or whatever, or was it $14 or $8 for... That was the last, that was the last one. That was the last one.
But Rodney, this is a plan, and I object, and just object highly to raising it and not knowing what it's going to, a goal that we're working to. This is a plan.
No, I totally agree with this, but what I'm saying is, I don't want any other money pulled from this. I want this, the, I want the consumer to pay for this.
And I just wanted to comment on Roland's question about a bottom of the bill, a voluntary deal. We do have one line there now, and we only have the ability of one line, I believe, and it's 50 cents, and I believe it goes toward upkeep of recreation fields or something like that, and I don't know the standing, but that ability is there, but only one line.
And council has put money into this, because we got $3.4 million from Republic as a one-time shot. And council, by a 7-0 vote, voted to take $2 million of that and put it toward the deficit that had been, that had grown as, as conservation. So we have put some money into this to get, to try and balance this thing out for our consumers.
They just lose it so much now.
Yeah, it's, it's a sieve.
Even the additional money, dollars, additional footprints as well, even the additional money coming in for this year, we're very aggressively attacking infrastructure needs and streets and so forth, areas that we've always said, we're not going to grow city government, what we want to do is make sure we address all the infrastructure issues that have happened, maybe the money weren't there, or the channels get down the road, whatever, whatever may have happened. But at this point, we are very aggressively approaching repairing, maintenance of our infrastructure streets. But now, of course, we have, we have water to bolt, and yes, so all that's already in play. Now, we really need to address water.
And I understand, I mean, my, my only point on this is that, that of all the projects that we, we look at, and you guys have in front of you, and I understand, and I know I've been there, seen that, I mean, they're all have a level of importance, but, but behind public safety, water is the next one that has to fall right there, because without water, we have no economic development. Without water, people leave. Without water, I mean, it, it all folds away, and I, I just, I just see that as so desperately important, that when you do that, other things will start to, start to happen. And I just really worry about, I, I, what I really worry about is managing the, the difference between raising the price, because we may take all his recommendations and raise it 20%, and guess what? Consumption goes down another 10%. Then where are we? We are nowhere. I, you gotta balance that level between raising the rate and selling water and keeping that consumption up at a good level or at higher level. And that's my real, real big fear with hitting people with a 20% right off the bat. I just, that's the one that bothers me, that the ongoing increases, I understand, we can sell it, we can explain it, we can do all those, but, but no, I want $10 of yours every month. I want, I'm going to take $10 of your, your bill every single month. And there are people out there that can't afford that. And if we can do, I'm just saying, if there's something out there that we can do right off the bat to try to minimize that 20%, we could bring it to 18%.
Well, you could redistribute the percentage increase, I mean, you can...
But it affects our borrowing.
We charge out of the city limits, and a lot of people are moving out of the city because of higher rates.
You already charged them 1.5 times.
But what I'm asking, is that enough? Should they be charged more?
Why?
We really need to move along, we've already been here an hour.
We could stay here all day on this.
Good discussion, and there'll be additional opportunities for discussion on all of these points, because again, council's not being asked to adopt anything today. But let's talk about, as commented about redistributing, and let's figure out who's paying and how they should pay. And that's the discussion about rate structure. So we have two charges that we use to assess for water, water reclamation service. What is a fixed charge? And this is the water fixed charge today, 2015, and what it would be in 2016 with the increases proposed. The vast majority of our single-family residential customers have a 5/8 inch meter, and their fixed charge would go up three and a half, almost $4 each of a month, under this proposal. And this is intended to cover basic infrastructure costs to serve, to go out, meet a meter, produce a bill, have customer service folks to respond to calls, do all the accounting, a lot of that, but maybe the biggest component is that basic infrastructure. So whether or not you use a gallon of water, we got to have the supply available for you, readiness to serve, we have to have the pipe in the ground connected to your home. It increases by meter size because it costs more to have all of that available if you have a bigger service. The other means that we charge is a volume rate. We know, Rick, that you use 4,000 gallons based on your metered water use. How should you pay for that? Well, under our current structure, let me focus you on the 2015 rate, this column here. For the first 2,000 gallons, I pay $2.49 per 1,000 gallon, which I basically pay $5, $4.98 for the first two. Then, here's what I pay as I use more. This is an increasing block, inverted block rate structure. The more you use, the more you pay. It's a conservation-oriented rate approach. And this is for residential customers. What's different about this approach is these old blocks, this is pretty unusual in the industry to have this many blocks. And what makes it unusual, it's not just Rick's opinion, look at the amount of build use you have at these upper blocks. It's minimal, in Rick's opinion. Why bother? Why do we have these blocks? What are we trying to accomplish? It's confusing, it's, it is really unusual to have this many blocks. It really doesn't accomplish anything. So what we're suggesting is that we reduce the number of blocks. And under the new approach, once you use over 39,000 gallons, for every unit, you pay $9.98. That's a suggestion, consideration. Water reclamation, you also have a fixed charge shown at the top, and then down below is the volume rate or the minimum. And we charge for our wastewater or water reclamation service based on a concept called average water use. And we look at the average water use in the wintertime, and that becomes the basis for your bill as a residential customer for the balance of the year. And what we're trying to capture here is the, the reality that in the dead of summer, you're using a lot of water on your lawn. It's not going into the water reclamation system, so you shouldn't be paying for it. And that's what this approach does. So we're not recommending any change in the structure, just an increase from 2015 to 2016, as shown in the fixed rate and the volume rate. Now, this gets to how customers pay for service. I want to talk about the real cost of service. And then very quickly, if I'm a customer that uses the same amount of water every month of the year, every month of the year, I use 4,000 gallons, my demand is like this, it's flat. But then, Bill, I'll pick on Bill, he has an acre of grass, and in the summer, his demands go like this, and then come back down in the fall. The cost to serve Bill is much greater than the cost to serve Rick, because what we have to do is, we have to build pipes that aren't this big. Now, we have to build pipes that are this big, and those pipes that are this big only get used in the summer. That capacity sits idle the rest of the year. So it's a very expensive way to operate a system and to construct a system. So meeting those peak demands puts a greater cost of service on the utility, and the customers that place those peak demands on the system should pay that cost. So we go through a cost of service analysis, and what we found is that your residential customers are paying more than they should, and your commercial, non-residential customers aren't paying as much as they should. Again, like I said earlier, with regard to your days-on-hand cash and how it's bundled, you didn't get in that position overnight. You didn't get into this misalignment of cost of service overnight, and we shouldn't try to correct it immediately. So we're suggesting a phase-in plan to bring the rates that these different customer classes, different customer groups, bring these rates back into alignment. And we're suggesting a three-year plan, as it says here, maybe it's a large one-time increase. If we correct this overnight, it's very significant. And so 2017 through 19, we, we go across the board with this increase in 2016. All customers see a 20% increase. Then 17, 18, and 19, we adjust for cost of service. Some customer classes see higher than a 7.5% increase, some customers see lower than a 7.5% increase. And over 17, 18, and 19, we get to cost of service.
Explain to the customer class, so they understand.
Different customer classes we have include residential, the single family, the multifamily, but then you also have commercial customers, you have what we call irrigation-only customers. At my house or my business, I have one meter that is for my domestic or indoor water use, but then I have a separate meter for irrigating the lawn. And so those irrigation-only meters, those are the ones that place the high demand in the summer, and that demand goes away in the winter, very costly, expensive service. And so it's those classes, including residential, that put those high demands on the system. And so when we look at the relationships here, what we found is that if we just did across-the-board increases to all our customers, they would be these percentages. You, you saw these percentages earlier. But in 17, 18, and 19, what we're proposing is a cost-of-service-based approach. And so what that means, as I said a moment ago, is that rather than having 7.5% for the residential class, in 17, 18, and 19, it would be less than that. Because right now, they're paying more than they should. Our non-residential customers aren't paying as much as they should. So we're going to start everybody off with the same increase, but then our non-residential will bear a greater burden, a greater cost responsibility in the future, a cost responsibility that is indicative of the cost that they place on the system. This is getting alignment. San Angelo is not unusual. When we work with clients, and there's been years between detailed cost-of-service studies, I've found results that are getting better. And you shouldn't do a cost-of-service study every year. These relationships don't change year to year, it's over time that they change. So it's not at all unusual to have the findings that we see here. So for one, we're recommending, under the five-year plan, these kinds of increases in the volume rate for residential, these kinds of increases in the volume rate for non-residential. And then in 2020, we'll get back to uniform across-the-board increases. And even by 2020, you might want to do another cost-of-service study or another in 2021. And one more point, now, on the water reclamation side, we're quote-unquote "in alignment", and so we're just recommending these across-the-board increases.
Does that five and a quarter is baked in for the numbers that we've been showing?
Yes.
It is, it is. So that's, that there's not going to be...
Five and a quarter plus 10 and a quarter equals seven and a half.
Yes, yes, that's the new math. Yes.
So Rick, when you say the non-residential customers are not paying enough, through your study, you see that our commercial rate is somewhat depressed?
It's not where it should be. When I look at the amount of revenue we're generating from the commercial class, and I look at the cost to serve that class, there's this difference. The cost to serve the class is here, the revenue we're getting is here, and we need to bring that in alignment. We don't bring it in alignment by lowering the cost, we bring it in alignment by raising the revenue.
I think it's going to be a very important point as we educate the public in being able to articulate that well.
It is, and one of the ways to do it, we've been touched on here, is we have this misalignment, and while we're talking about increases in the future, we're going to correct that, and this is one of the benefits to our residential customers. And it's not a contrived benefit, it is a real cost-of-service benefit, that you should pay your cost of service, and so should you. And that's what this is all about.
He's giving you the short version, he gave us a longer version of that, the, the cost of service between residential and non-residential.
I will, I will acquiesce to your prior investigation.
And we feel okay about it. I mean, I think that's what you all need to know.
It's a good...
We feel good about the explanation.
So I want to share with you just quickly, for a residential customer, the water bill today, our average customer, $31, we get out, and these numbers you saw previously on graphs, so similar, if I use less, my bill is lower, if I use more, my bill is higher, but this information shares with you, the bills for the future. Similar for non-residential, water rack. And then we have a whole section on drought rates, and I'm going to give you the read-or-digest version. Drought rates should, when you're in a drought situation, you're telling customers, use less, we're going to get less revenue, our costs are fixed, how do we make up the difference? Well, the drought rate is supposed to send that message that if you use more, you're going to pay more, so we want you to use less. But if you do use more, it's going to help us make up more revenue. So we're recommending some drought rates and sun that are factors, multiples of the current rates, or the rates we're recommending. So at drought level one, the current rate would go 10% higher. At drought level three, the current rate would go 30% higher. And that revenue would help us be a sustainable utility, generate the revenue we would otherwise lose, but if all that demand goes away, then we don't get the revenue. So we're just asking council to consider not just raising rates, these are the different drought levels, but I'll ask you to focus here. If we get the reduction at drought level one, our revenue will go down by 3/4 of a million dollars at drought level two and so on. And that represents 3% of our revenue, 6% and 9% of our revenue. Well, we could just raise rates to cover that up, but then we're in this vicious cycle. I raise rates and use less, I raise rates and use less, and so on. But we could also consider increasing our reserves. And a comment was made earlier about, you know, an industry standard is maybe more 90 days than 75. Well, we could consider maintaining higher reserves so that when we're in the drought and customers can serve, we don't have to turn around and raise their rates. How do we increase our reserves? We increase our reserves by getting more money from our customers, and we can't do that overnight. So this is just planting the seed with council, that as part of a five-year plan, when we look at this a year or two from now and see the results, and if we've had that growth in the community and so on, that might be an opportunity to take those revenues and create this reserve fund, so that while we're at drought level three and our customers can serve, or our revenue is tank, we don't have to turn around and raise rates maybe as much as we otherwise would because we have these reserves. So this one is just food for thought.
So...
In summary...
I was going to ask one question about that. The recommendation, one more slide, okay? So is the recommendation that you adopt as part of, let's say we adopt, the council adopts a good, poor plan, does that add those factors? Is that with those added in? Or is this just, you put this out to consider?
I, I would, I would, thank you for your question. I would say this is more for consideration. We think that given the, the recommendations to the rate structure, that you absolutely want to use drought rates to help influence demand. And these factors would be a great starting place, and we would also ask the council to consider raising the cash reserve target.
So is the two-pronged approach?
Yes, don't put all our eggs in one basket.
And the additional capital.
Yes. So in summary, do nothing doesn't work. Maintain doesn't get us a portfolio for the water supply project. Moving forward does. From a rate structure standpoint, no real change to the fixed charge, other than we're going to increase. We're not changing the structure, but simplifying, consolidating our volume rate, and let's work for a three-year transition to cost of service, bring those customer classes in alignment with the cost of service. So... So.